Like already Chairman, we have Commissioner Collins and we have Commissioner Shea. And it's one o'clock, so we should be ready to go when you are.
Okay, thank you. Okay, North Fork County Commission meeting, Wednesday, August 12, 1:00 PM. This meeting is a Zoom teleconference meeting. The Secretary of State or Governor Baker on March 12, 2020. And he suspended a certain section of the provisions of the open meeting law. If I call a meeting to order, roll call Commissioner Shea.
Proven.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Thank you. Mike, do you want to tell us if there's anybody else on the phone lines that can be recorded?
Yes, yes, just for the edification of those on the line, the county commissioners meeting is being recorded. And in addition to the three county commissioners, I see Sheila Carroll, I see Robert Pearson, I see Richard Fitzpatrick, I see Dale Kurtz, Chris Goldsmith, Michelle Labardini, and Heather Hamilton.
Okay, thank you. Like the motion on the minutes of the executive session meeting of July 29, 2020 for approval. Have a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, and we hold, do not release them at this time.
Okay, that's the motion made in the second to hold the minutes of the executive session of July 29 until a future date. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Accept the motion on the minutes of the open session meeting of August 5, 2020 for approval.
I'll make the motion, we approve this open session minutes of August 5, 2020 for approval.
Second.
There's a motion made in the second to accept the open session meeting of August 5, 2020 for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Does the chair have any public comment? There ain't no public comment, we're going to the capital improvement report and the coronavirus virus update. I believe that John McGowan is still on vacation. Mike?
Yeah, yes, yes, he is Chairman. Is John Vignoni on the call, Sheila? No, I don't believe he is, but in their absence, I can give a quick update on the things that I'm have, oh, you know, that we're working on, oh, you know, this week and will continue to as we go forward. Like earlier today, we had like a contract, like at the Superior Court to do an assessment on the dome. Oh, you know, oh, you know, to assess the integrity of the dome, all like into check. I can see if there were any areas in the dome where water could penetrate the dome. So like we'll wait for those results, but you know, that information, those results are going to give us like a really good idea of how we move forward in addressing other capital needs like related to the Superior Court dome, which we do have funding for in the bond proceeds that we're moving on now. The sheriff's office was out at Quincy District Court this morning. And they'll be back, and they'll be back tomorrow morning, cleaning up the perimeter of the property, the hill in the rear of the parking lot down on the Washington, on the Washington street side of Quincy District Court. Like in helping us, like really doing overall cleaning of the property. Like once all that is done, we're getting votes as we speak to reseal and to re, oh, and to re-strike the parking lot at Quincy District Court. So that will be good and right before that will have the parking lot swept as well, working with the Quincy. So all that, Alex is moving forward. Like we also speaking in this Quincy District, what we have actually like a meeting there tomorrow with two HVAC cleaning vendors, you know, to be able to address, you know, the cleaning of the ductwork like in Quincy and also other courts as well, we're getting quotes for that. And we just actually, today we executed a contract with a vendor off of the state bid list to do air quality testing, like in all of my county-owned buildings as well. So we have all that in the works and then we're moving also on the signage at the Wallaston Recreation, at the Wallaston Recreational Facility. We have, we have like a Zoom call the beginning of next week with the Milton Sign Review Committee to go over the new signage at President's as well. So we have a lot of things underway, you know, things are going well and it's been a busy summer here in Norfolk County.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from Commissioner Shea?
I do have a couple, Mr. Chairman, they're pretty much standard. I was, I was down there this morning with Mike and I noticed that the side window that was vandalized and broken probably four or five weeks ago is still boarded up. And I didn't know if we had a report on that window, it's just pretty unsightly. Again, it's one of the main windows, it is on the side luckily, but I didn't.
Get a hold of John, get a hold of John Vignoni and tell him to have it taken care of, Carissa.
Okay.
Mike will do that.
Yes.
Secondly, I want to comment and compliment Mike because we're trying to get, he's trying to get a lot of this work accomplished this summer while that parking lot is pretty much vacant during the pandemic because they're on halftime and they're breaking their team up, so to speak, and it isn't as busy. Because you know, once the court gets busy, you can't get a sardine in that parking lot. So I spoke to one of the vendors who was measuring it today. We're really, he's, he can do a much better and thorough and hopefully cheaper job, cheaper to us if we get it done this summer while it's empty, because we won't have the inconvenience anyone. Because as you all know, that parking lot's filled by nine o'clock every day in a normal workday. You can't get in there any other way. So the sheriff department's cleaning, the city is hauling away the refuse, they're putting it in there, wherever they dispose of street waste and we have a pretty good thing going there. So we hope to get it all done the next week. So compliments to the director. That's it.
Okay, thank you for everything, Director Mallon, and move as fast as possible you can to make sure we get that parking lot done as soon as possible. Any comments, Commissioner Collins?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner Shea. Anything on the oil business?
No, we don't, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're moving the personnel matters, we have three. Does the commissioners have any problem with the three personnel papers?
Well, they look fine to me. I noticed the first one has a change in that title for that career employee that recently received a bump because she's a head clerk.
Yes.
And so that's good to resolve that. One's a retirement and the other is a new hire, so I think everything's in order.
Right. Okay, so the motion made in the second to vote the personnel papers of the three names as presented to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. They're opening, we have none. Contact awards, we have none. And for once in a long time, we do have a report of the RSVP director, Robert, Robert, and it's nice to have you make your report, Robert.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I am very glad to be back with all of you and I have not given a report since March, since the beginning of COVID. So you should have a copy of my report as well as the two newsletters that have gone out during COVID in front of you. There's a lot of information, so in the interest of time, I'm just going to go over the highlights. National Senior Corps has been affected, as you can imagine, nationally by the coronavirus and each separate RSVP is responding uniquely in efforts to make up for the loss of volunteers and be innovative to find new ways to serve people during COVID. So 62 volunteers have been active for RSVP with time sheets since March. That represents about 22% of our total volunteer pool. This is normal. It actually has increased from about 12% in March since we have increased the number of activities through innovation. We have new mask makers and as you're aware, some of our mask makers have in the past donated to the Norfolk County staff. We have boosted up our involvement with the Red Cross and have had a number of blood driver ambassadors and screeners as well as Red Cross emergency relief people that are signed up as well. So these are a combination of using our current volunteer force that's been sitting on the sidelines as well as recruiting new volunteers through Volunteer Match, our primary resource for recruitment. We also have a new telefriend program, which in conjunction with the Massachusetts Association for the Blind, we've been able to recruit and match eight volunteers with individuals who are isolated, who are blind or visually impaired. And they've been through a remote training to work with people, learn how to work with people who are blind, visually impaired, and hopefully when things open up eventually, they can help these people in their homes as well. Operation Gratitude, letter writing to veterans and first responders. We've increased the role of volunteers doing that remotely. So any possible way that we can increase volunteering, we have, we have sought to do so. Sadly, two of our Norwood area veteran riders died at the beginning of COVID, Bobby Keppel and Charles Wellington. The volunteer drivers were involved, they're the ones that notified me and we did reach out to the families. So we have been touched by COVID in our program. Terms of outreach and recruitment. In terms of the newsletter, you see in front of you the special edition COVID issue. That went out to 500 volunteers and stations and that was emailed in April. We've gotten responses that it was uplifting, people appreciated hearing it as it includes some inspirational messages from the director, I should say, the chairperson of our advisory board, as well as some poems, some rhyming poems, a whimsical poem in this issue that a volunteer had submitted. And then in the full newsletter for June through August, 300 volunteers were direct mailed a newsletter and we highlighted volunteers in action during COVID. Again, trying to keep people informed about the ways RSVP is active. Our Board of, our Advisory Board, not really Board of Directors, has been active with us in reaching out to volunteers on a regular basis. We've given them lists. Chris and I and the board members have reached out just to check in with volunteers, many, most of whom are sidelined during this time, just to see how they're doing. And that's meant a lot to people. One thing that I think you'll all will appreciate, early in COVID, when we looked at, were aware of how many businesses were affected by COVID, we had the idea after looking at how many businesses have supported our luncheon. And of course, the luncheon that was due to happen the day after tomorrow is postponed probably till next year, at least I hope it'll happen next year. But we'd looked at a number of those businesses that have for years given us free certificates and coupons and we reached out to them and we said, you know, we know you're struggling. We want to help you now. We want to, for all the years you've given free certificates, we want to purchase some certificates from you now for when we have our next luncheon. And it meant a lot to them because a number of them said, you know, nobody has thought of us and helping us in this way. So you could count on us in the future for when we do come back. And they thanked us very much for thinking of them and supporting them this way.
Very great, Todd.
I'll finish up, thank you. I'll finish up by saying that our next step is more drivers have been coming back. As you can imagine, you know, most of the medical appointments have, had stopped except for emergencies. So we did have a few brave drivers who were willing to take folks with critical needs to appointments such as dialysis and radiation treatment. And we have had very strict protocols in place, you could see on page two of my report, a list of all the protocols to make sure that volunteers had no contact, physical contact with their riders. Everybody wore face masks, they checked the day before the appointment to make sure somebody was well. They did not accompany people into the facilities. And we are now getting ready to send care packages to the, I would say, the 30 primary volunteers that are starting to come back more, which will include face masks, gloves, pocket hand sanitizers, a laminated placard, which we've been overdue in giving to drivers so they could put that on their dashboard just as official recognition that they are the driver for people coming out of their meetings, as well as a complimentary notebook with the RSVP and county logos on it with a pen. So a little care package that Chris and I are going to be mailing out next week. Lastly, I will say that, you know, food support, Red Cross, telefriend, vet rides, that's really been all that we have been doing. And as we look into September, we are thinking, what are the other ways that we could really build more volunteering? Chris and Joanne, lead school volunteer, have been working hard at establishing possible remote learning options with all these unknowns we don't know. You know, clearly we don't know, but there are going to be opportunities for the school volunteers to learn Zoom, to get training and possibly look at other resources to be able to do storytelling and make that available to schools. And most recently, we have been doing outreach to new stations. We have a new partner site out of Quincy to be able to do remote learning for English, ESOL, English to speakers of other languages. And that's going to be a natural for some of the school volunteers on the sidelines to be able to do remote learning with one-on-one tutors and for more advanced people who are, you know, have been teachers already, to do conversational classes as part of group online. So that's pretty much the update. I don't want to say too much more, but for 9/11 Day of Service, our board has decided we are going to reach out to local firefighters and police. We are going to, for Norfolk County, have an outreach for volunteers to, over a period of days around 9/11, to send letters of appreciation to our local first responders, our firefighters and police officers. And we will have collection sites and have our board members distribute these letters to the local fire departments and police departments. So we continue to be very busy with a lower number of volunteers active. We're still very busy and we have the support of the National Senior Corps, hopefully to even get more funding to get possibly, what are they, the portable, portable phones or the tablets? Is the word I was trying to think of, to get the tablets and get funding for tablets for volunteers. So, thank you, that's it.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for the report. Commissioner Shea or Commissioner Collins, have any comment?
Well, I, Robert mentioned it, but I was, I'm missing the luncheon and I did realize, I looked at my book yesterday, Monday morning and I noticed it was this week, so we'll look forward to next year. But it seems like everyone's been paying attention to your primary mission, which is, you know, to take care of a lot of these seniors, but it's good to see that we're, we're branching out a little and God knows when we'll be back to normal, but a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins.
Nice job, Robert.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for the report and thank Chris also for a great job all these are doing.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Robert. Next on the agenda is the rail for Route 1A at Fisher Street. The permission for the right-of-way entry in the land damage agreement, a discussion and vote. Director Mallon?
Yes, and thank you, Chairman. We've been working together with the Aggie School, Joe McNichols from the, from the engineering department as well. Like is Derek Roma from the Department of Transportation. And like we began actually talking about the Route 1A reconstruction project at the meeting, at the meeting last week. Like at the time, we mentioned that we were still working through like a few things. But Derek has joined, has joined our Zoom and, you know, he can present, you know, to the county commissioners an overview of what the project is, oh, you know, like what, oh, you know, the Department of Transportation is asking, but like in short, we've been working with John McNichols, like with the school and like in the right-of-entry agreement and like in the land damage agreement, like is something, both agreements are agreements that, oh, you know, we're recommending for approval to the county commissioners, but, oh, you know, Derek, if you could give an overview of what the project is, that would be great.
Derek, are you on?
I am here, can you hear me?
Okay, just say your name for the record, please.
Yep, my name is Derek Roma and I represent the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and the Right-of-Way Bureau. And our group, responsible primarily for the acquisition of rights and property outside of the existing layout when we have to construct the projects such as this one. So we've been working for several months, you know, close to a year or so on the acquisition of property all along the entire corridor and one of those properties, as mentioned, is the Norfolk Aggie School. So we're on the kind of the tail end of the acquisition process, moving into the bid phase of the project. But for a general overview of the project itself, it's a, it's a significant one. It's about two miles of Route 1A reconstruction, starting down in the town center, about 300 feet north of Route 27 or East Street and then extending all the way up to the, just into the Norwood line just to end the sidewalks at a convenient location. So we'll be adding sidewalks in both, both sides of the street where there currently isn't sidewalks continuous. We'll have continuous sidewalks the entire length. There's some driveway openings that are, you know, various sizes, don't really meet the standards of access management from mascot's perspective, so we're tightening up some things there to better control the way traffic comes in and out of the roadway. Safety for pedestrians, you know, a force of concern. And then there's bicycle accommodations as well. So there'll be generally a five-foot bike lane striped along the entire corridor with 11-foot travel lanes in each direction. New granite carving, the entire length of the corridor, you know, doing some drainage work, which I can touch on with the Aggie property. Relocating utility poles, so generally try to put them on the back of the sidewalks as to the extent that we can along the entire corridor, maintaining safe distance for ADA compliance. It'll be a full-depth reconstruction for the majority of the project, which is quite substantial because there's a 22-foot concrete base underneath the, underneath the most of the roadway. So that, and it's now being excavated out. And then the portion from the far south of the project, from the MBTA bridge down to East Street there, I believe that's just the Millen overlay. The bridge at, over the Ponset River before North Street will be replaced. And then there's some other minor work around Cubs Pond and the Culvert there, but that will be, that will stay there. In front of the Aggie School itself, one of the, one of the major things is that we're improving there is the intersection with Fisher Street where there'll be a dedicated left-turn lane heading north on Route 1A, turning onto Fisher. And then heading from Fisher, intersecting with Route 1A, there'll be a left-turn lane heading north onto Route 1A. So that should, should be an improvement for traffic flow. There'll be sidewalks constructed, but on mascot property. Utility poles are being relocated or already have, I think they're already moved out there in that location on, they'll be on mascot property, but there'll be three guy wires that the utility company will install that extend onto Norfolk County property, on the Aggie School property. So the utility poles themselves will be on mascot's layout, but the guy wires are proposed to extend into the county's property. And then the wires, you know, would extend between the poles. So we're just requesting the easements for the utility company to install those guy wires and maintain the electric and utility lines. Where the crosswalk crosses the northern entrance on the Aggie School property on Route 1A, there's two entrances there where they crosswalk, we'll have a crosswalk across that entrance. That entrance will be reconfigured a little bit to ensure that the wheelchair ramps are ADA compliant. So the sidewalk there will be reconfigured a bit. There's some landscaping and a sign for the Aggie School there that will need to be relocated to accommodate the work. So we have a relocation section within our department, it's working with the Aggie School in order to reimburse for the costs associated with relocating that sign. On the north side of that same entrance, closer to the pond there, there's a guardrail, it's a wood guardrail that's within the clear zone and it's not mash approved, it doesn't have a crash-worthy end treatment. And the back side of it is facing Route 1A traffic, so we're going to be cutting that guardrail back within the limits of the grading work. So there'll be some grading work along the back of the side. So there'll be some grading work along the back of the sidewalk. The sidewalk's actually going to be raised about a foot, so we'll be removing a portion of that guardrail. I mentioned the drainage. There's the current drainage outfall on that on the Ag property near the pond. So my understanding is the proposed outfall will replace the existing outfall and be installed along the same alignment as the existing one. There'll be new stone for the pipe ends and the proposed outfall will be constructed to prevent scour and erosion at the outfall. We reviewed the, our consultants reviewed the hydrology for the pond and shown that there's a very small increase in peak flows during 10 year and 100 year storm events. So the condition that will be built afterwards will be essentially the same as it is before. The project is now point zero one cubic feet per second to point zero two. So it's nothing significant. And all of the drainage work was submitted to the North, the County of Walpole for the Conservation Commission and our notice of intent. And a order of conditions was issued for that. Just again, generally speaking, along the corridor, along the frontage there, there'll be some minor grading. The sidewalk will be installed. The driveways will be cut to match the grade of the existing the new roadway entrances. And then these where there's a walkway down at the front of the building where the current crosswalk is a cross Route one A, that'll be graded to meet up with the sidewalk and then the new crosswalk will be installed. So there's, you know, in order, one section on the entrance for the where the driveway is going to get reconstructed, the northern entrance where we need to move the sign, there's a very small triangular piece of property that will be conveyed to the state, three square feet in total approximately. And that's just on the edge of the wheelchair ramp in order to make sure that we're installing that in ADA compliance. So there's that small, three plus or minus square feet, a property that will become state highway layout. And then there's proposed permanent easement for the utility company and some temporary work for grading and the driveway match. And then the drainage easement, which again is existing now, it's an existing condition that we're bringing up to MasDOTT current standards and improving the situation. Eventually this project, you know, this section of roadway will be discontinued as a state highway. Once we construct the project, this will be discontinued as a state highway and turned over to town for maintenance. But again, we're, our intent is to make it a safer, you know, more modern roadway, bringing up the current standards throughout, and it should be a vast improvement. So with that, I'll turn it over unless there's any questions for me.
All right. Thank you, Derek, for a real thorough report. The Commissioners really appreciate that. Any questions on this project from Commissioner Collins?
I'm all set. Nice report, Derek. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shea?
Just a quick one. I looked at everything and our engineer is on board, County Surveyor, correct? Joe McNichols?
Yeah, yes, he is. Yes, he is Commissioner Shea, yes. And he's worked with Derek extensively through this process.
And we're ready to go?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, we've had a great relationship long before I came around, certainly with the the Right of Way Division and, you know, there's no reason not to go forward today. And if you're, if you're all set, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make a motion.
All right. The Chair, the Chair will wait a motion for approval of the right of way on Route one A and Fisher Street and including the land damage agreement, discussion and whatnot. So our wait a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we give permission for the right of way entry and the land damage agreement as presented and discussed today, presented to us by Derek Roma for Route one A in Walpole near the Norfolk Ag Council School.
And we authorize the Chair to sign on behalf of the Commissioners.
Yes.
So that's a motion under the second.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. The motion made in the second as recommended by the Director and by the engineers who approve the project as presented by Derek Fisher and Route one A in the County of Walpole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you and thank you again, Derek, for a great job.
Thank you. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, Derek.
Okay. The next thing we have on the agenda is the Edward Burns Memorial Justice Assistance Award. That's an award that's been quite a few years in the making. And I believe that the Quincy gets 30,000, the Administrator is 1,500, Raymond 11,000, and Norfolk County, we get zero because we're the sponsors of the award. It's a total award of $43,714. And I believe that the Quincy Police Department is the one that is the original sponsor. Wait a motion on the Burn Award.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we unanimously endorse the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Association Grant MOU for approval by the county commissioners.
Second.
I can authorize the Chairman to sign, please.
And authorize the Chairman to sign, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
There's a motion made in second to pro the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant MOU for approval and also to grant the signature of the Chairman for the approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you. We're going to the registry, Robyn, will there be any comments on that? Director Mallon?
Yes, just really quickly, we had to with the, like with the retooling of all the deeds excise, deeds excise fees that was included as part of the FY21 budget process. Like you will notice that the, that the total revenue expectation, the 3.8, $3 million, oh, you know, like is there as the entire 100% of other deeds excise revenues. So we did that, like in part of, our retooling of the FY21 spreadsheet. Also, you will notice just very generally in terms of the registry fees, though the the total registry, the total registry fee projection for FY21 was always downgraded in FY21 from two, from 2.4 million dollars to two, to 2.3 million dollars in FY21. That being said, for you will see in terms of the total July numbers, our total, our total recording fee revenues, the, they came in at, at almost $309,000, where the, you know, where the divided out, oh, you know, a projection for the month of July was just over $214,000. So that, that I put our July, our July, our July recording fee revenues almost $95,000 over projection, which is very good. And then on the 100% of the deeds excise, like which is, all the total deeds excise our projection, I'll really stayed the same from FY20 to FY21. And we were almost $77,000 above what the July monthly projection was. So, you know, the registry had like a very, a very good month of July. Obviously, we don't have any idea what the rest of the year entails. This is only one month, but we're, you know, the registry is off to a very, a very good start. I can add such a registry, our recording fees and deeds excise revenues as well. In terms of the online revenues, like we download, I'm sorry, we downgraded that projection there as well. In terms of what we need to, to meet the $180,000, the 100, the $180,000 projection, like we fell a little short in that, in the registry only bring in just over $13,000 in online fees. But, you know, this is all, oh, you know, these are all things that are going to be looked at during the operation now as well. But like for one month into the fiscal year, we're off to a pretty good start in terms of the registry revenues.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from Commissioner Shea?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Commissioner Collins?
All set also.
Okay. Then the next thing is the trial balance, which we have to have approval from Joe D'Orio for the July, month of July trial balance with some motion.
Mike, is this the one that you had talked to me about earlier that we didn't have all the data?
Yes, all the information is in there, except, except for the, the registry, the registry revenues for the month of July. Like, and that's why, that's one of the reasons why, frankly, our numbers are off there in terms of what the, and what the July trial balance actually is.
So do you want us to wait a week so we can get it right?
I, yeah, like if, if, if that's okay, Commissioner Collins, with, like, if the Commissioners agree, I'd be happy to ask the county accountant to update the trial balance with, with the July registry revenues included.
Yeah, I suggested it be tabled till next week, if that's all right.
I'll second that. I agree. I did notice it too, but.
Okay. The motion made in the second to table the, you'll hold on the trial balance from Joe D'Orio until next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. The next item we have, we have a request from the Register O'Donnell to meet with the county commissioners. I'll hear from Director Mallon on that.
Yes, I can thank you, Chairman. We got, like, we received a letter, I believe it was last Thursday morning, from the Register. He, and the letter, like, as you can see, indicates that he would like to speak about statutory and budgetary issues. I will note that, that we are meeting with the FinCom, like, on the 16th of September. And, you know, and I do know that they've been interested, like, in statutory and budgetary issues as well.
So your recommendation is to send the correspondents back that the board will meet on September 12th?
I would recommend, and I mean, we've been working to keep everyone on the same page here. Like, since, since we've been trying to do that with everybody, like, what I would recommend is, oh, you know, that, that we extend to the Register of Deeds that, oh, you know, the county commissioners would be happy to meet with the Register on the 16th of September. I can to also have the FinCom, oh, you know, like as part of, oh, as part of the meeting as well, so they can hear the same information. And what I would also, oh, you know, what I would also suggest for the county commissioners, oh, you know, consideration in responding is that, like, we ask the Register to get the county commissioners, the end of FinCom information about the specifics, like relating to statutory and budgetary issues that he's hoping, that he's hoping to discuss in advance of Wednesday, September 16th, like ideally the end of the prior week. Alex, so the, so the county commissioners and the FinCom have, like, have time, oh, you know, to digest that information and be able to look it over.
Comments from Commissioner Collins?
I'm fine with that date and I would like to see in advance what Bill wanted to talk about. It's always nice to have it fully vetted as we were going.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shea?
I agree. I think we're, it's a reasonable date, but I have a question. Do we expect to have our consultant on board by September 16th?
It will be right around there. Like, I think around that time, we might be having interviews, like, or going through the proposals.
All right. Well, then I, I support the date because I don't want to do, I don't want to do a, I don't want to start talking about budget issues and then maybe have the challenge in September or October.
Yes. And to that point, again, Commissioner Shea, I mean, just to reaffirm that, I mean, oh, you know, these are all issues.
That we're going to study.
Exactly.
Okay. September 16th sounds like a good kickoff day.
Okay. Do I have a motion, Commissioner Shea?
I'll make a motion that we make arrangements and communicate with Register O'Donnell and the County Advisory Board Budget Committee relative to a September 16th meeting to discuss this matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you, Commissioners. We have the report of the County Director, Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make this very quick, just at the outset, if I can ask everyone who's not speaking, commute. There's a, there's, there's a lot of feedback on this line. I mean, I still actually hear it. So I, give me one moment. Is that better? No, it's not. Hold on. Just bear with me one minute. So the first thing is, we'll be meeting with the trial court tomorrow morning here in the Dedham, in the Dedham complex, like, it's a period court, in Dedham District, just to go over the coronavirus protocols that we've been taking. We have a very good relationship with the facilities manager who covers Quincy and Dedham, Quincy, Dedham and Brookline. And then we have like another facilities manager from the trial court who we work with on the Rentham and Stoughton Courthouses. But the, the gentleman who oversees the trial court operations for for Dedham, Brookline and Quincy will be here in Dedham Square tomorrow. So we're looking forward to meeting with him. The other thing that we've been working on and I want, and I want to thank Nancy Rockwell in our office is that we, we've been working very hard to, to come by and supply, like, of hand sanitizer. The supply has been very, very, very challenging to get. And like in working, oh, and working with Nancy and Sheila, like, I believe we're going to be able to fulfill the, oh, you know, like frankly, the, oh, you know, the mandate and requirement that, like, and the expectation that all of our county owned buildings have, where we provide ample hand sanitizer. where we provide ample hand sanitizer. So I'm excited about that because those are the things we get excited about in 2020. As I mentioned like a few minutes ago, the operations analysis of the RFP for that is out. Like and it's active, it's actively being advertised. And we do know that there's, there was already interest in that. And then, and then, then the request for proposals for our annual internal audit. Oh, you know, in financial, in financial statements and management letter, we're putting that out as well. And we're going to have like a pre-submission conference at the beginning of next week on that. And like we should be able to have a new, like a new auditor in place to begin with FY '20, probably I would say around mid-September as well. So, you know, there were no dark days this summer here in Norfolk County. We've been, like, actually accomplishing a lot. And I can, we'll continue to, to do that as we move through the summer, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any follow-up comments from Commissioner Collins?
I'm all set. Nice job, Mike.
Okay, any, Commissioner Shay?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, and good job, Mike and your staff, as usual, you're doing a great job. And good luck to you, Commissioner Shay, on the first. And all we're doing, we show a lot of like.
Thank you.
And I'll wait a motion for adjournment.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you Commissioners and thank you Director and have a great day.
Thank you Brandon, thank you Mike and Joe.
Thank you, everyone.